Okay, Lauren, I think we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon. This is a review session of the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, June 17th. The time is 1:01 PM. The first item on our agenda is a non-ULP referral for a UDAP designation and project approval in the Bronx, Community District 4. Our presenter is James Morales.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is the Bronx Point Project and Community District 4 of the Bronx. The applicant is HPD. The location is at 575 Exterior Street. The action requested is an urban development actionary project designation and project approval, otherwise known as a UDAP. You might recall this project as the Lower Concourse North Project, which was approved by the Commission on August 23rd, 2017. The actions for that approval were the disposition of the site, a zoning map amendment to rezone from M21 to R72, C25, and extend the Harlem River Waterfront District. There were zoning text amendments to create a new subdistrict to the Harlem River Waterfront, to actually make it part of the Harlem River Waterfront Access Plan, and to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area. There was also a special permit to reduce parking in order to facilitate the affordable housing at that site. If you recall, the site is just north of the 145th Street Bridge, just south of Milpon Park, just east of the Harlem River, southwest of the Bronx Terminal Market, and west of the Hostess Community College complex. It's served by the IRTs and the Lexington Line, as well as the Major Deegan, which runs right adjacent to the site. It also has numerous bus lines in the area. There is also the OakLink Rail Link that runs up the shoreline of the Harlem River, just to the west of the site as well, and we'll see a picture of that later. The zoning, again presently, as per the zoning, is R72-C25 and a commercial overlay of C25 over it. Right. And to the west is the Harlem River, to the east is the C44. There's M12s further east, and M14R8As to the east as well. You'll notice that the dotted line represents the UDAP area. It is larger than the zoning lot and includes parts of Milpon Park as well, and we'll explain that in a second. Here are some shots of the site, just to remind you what it looks like. The upper left-hand corner is looking from the 145th Street Bridge area straight up the river, and you can see there the OakLink Rail in the river itself, and it runs adjacent to the site. The second photo is from the park, looking into the vacant site today. The bottom photo, again, is looking into the site from the park. Number four is the park, again, looking at the vacant site, and across the Harlem River, you see the buildings in Harlem. And number five, again, we're looking at the inlet coming out of the park, which will be part of the UDAP area as well. And the final photograph there is the empty vacant site, which is the actual development site. There are no jobs on it. There are no residences. It's vacant at the time, present time. So the UDAP is necessary to help facilitate the financing of the open space within the project area. If you recall, the development site was previously approved in the DISPO in 2017. That's why this is a non-ULP UDAP. The open space consists of an upland connection here, a shore public walkway here, a supplemental access area here, which is part of the Harlem River Waterfront Access Plan, a public plaza along Exterior Street. This shaded-out gray is actually the Deegan as it goes over the site, so this is underneath the Deegan right here. There's public access throughout this site. And as I said, the UDAP itself, which is the purple line here, is also financing improvements within the park, which includes a new playground here, a new fitness facility area here, expanded barbecue areas here, and rehabilitated revetment along the entire Harlem River Waterfront as well. All of the WAP requirements will be met as part of Phase 1 of this project. Phase 1 is the outline of this building here. It's served by a drive with a circular drop-off. Phase 2 is to come a little later. Let's look at those phases now, a little in detail. The Phase 1 project, which you can see here, is going to be approximately 557,000 square feet. It contains 540 permanently affordable units. The maximum tower height will be 260 feet. It has about 73,000 square feet of commercial uses, including a theater and retail on the ground floor. It also has about 60,000 square feet of community facility use, which includes the Hip Hop Museum, as well as an educational facility. And again, it will include, in this phase, 125,000 square feet of open space, which I had just detailed. The Phase 2 building, which is ghosted here in the background, would contain 382,000 square feet, about 504 units of affordable housing, a maximum tower height of 375, 5,000 square feet of commercial area, and about 45,000 square feet of community facility use. And here we see a rendering of the project from Exterior Street. The Hip Hop Museum would be on the second floor here, the retail here, public outdoor space here, more retail here, and the residential entrances would be back behind the building. And here we see a rendering in situation, the Phase 1 here, the ghosted Phase 2 here. And across the bridge to the south is what could be built under the present-day Harlem River Waterfront District. That is not a project at the time, just to show you the scale difference. And again, we see the open space. We see how there's a seamless transition from the existing Milpon Park into the new supplemental area and all the waterfront access. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Levin?
So just to reiterate, I think, what you just said. The purpose, I mean, normally we see these, when an HPD project comes to us, it's normally for UDAP, project approval, disposition, any rezonings. It's all one big ball of wax. Why did this one have to postpone UDAP to this point?
Well, I think it was a decision made by the city to go forward with this project in 2017 before a developer was selected, so we just kind of broke it up.
Okay. And in this case, then, the UDAP is needed in order to finance the open space?
It's not only for the open space. The UDAP financing could be used for anything in the project, but the intention is to help with the financing of the open space. But it doesn't preclude other uses, you know?
So as I recall, we did look at this project before the developer had been selected, and we approved some building envelope limitations.
And then it came back again.
And that was an issue for some of us, that we were approving something without really knowing what it was. And so they did come back and make a design presentation to us after the developer had been selected, and I believe, is this exactly what they showed us last time?
Exactly, yeah.
So nothing has changed since they...
No. The only thing that has changed since it was approved here was that the City Council brought down the tower height of the Tower B from 400 to 375, and changed the affordability option to deep affordability, 1 and deep affordability.
Okay.
The City Council did that, and that's how it stands today.
Okay. But the, and that's in Phase 2? Those changes? No?
No, no. Phase 1 and Phase 2 are, this is all one project. It's just how they're building it, honestly. You know, it's all the same.
But the site plan, the way the park's going to look, the way the park relates to the existing park, nothing's changed?
Yeah, nothing has changed.
Okay, good. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, then, we will refer this to the Community Board for 45 days.
I will note that the letter in your package from the Community Board basically waives the review, the referral, so I think we can schedule it for a hearing, if that's fine. Okay. All right, thanks. The second item on our agenda, page 15, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan, Community District 2. Our presenter is Nabilah Malik.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by 419 MM LLC for a landmark preservation special permit to modify use and bulk regulations of the M15B district to facilitate the construction of a new eight-story commercial building and the restoration of a three-story federal row house, and to allow retail use below the level of the second story in both buildings on the property located at 419 Broadway within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, Manhattan, Community District 2. The project site is located at the northwestern corner of Broadway and Canal Street, and shown on this slide is a rendering of the historic building to remain and be restored, and the proposed eight-story commercial building. This is a photo of the existing condition of the site. It sits at the corner of Broadway and Canal. You can see the Canal Street subway entrance for the NQRW lines immediately adjacent to the project site. I can highlight it over here. It's a little hard to see. So as detailed in the briefing sheet, the site was created by a merger of three previously existing lots that correspond to three existing buildings, including the historic row house on Broadway, and a one-story retail building, and a two-story building with office over retail to be demolished to make way for the proposed new commercial building. The project site is located on the southern edge of the M15B zoning district in Soho. Once a manufacturing district, Soho today is a dynamic mixed-use district with Broadway and Canal Streets as major commercial corridors where ground-floor retail is prevalent. Rowhouses and tenements intersperse among larger loft buildings that define the general character of the area. Upper floors of these buildings are occupied by a variety of uses, including commercial offices, joint living work quarters for artists, and residential lofts. Few conforming heavy commercial and light manufacturing uses remain in the area, including industrial supply wholesalers along Canal Street, as well as food production, wholesale, and distribution businesses along Center, Baxter, and Hester Streets. The M15B district permits light industrial and commercial uses as of right, up to 5FAR, and Use Group 6 uses are not permitted as of right below the level of the second story. Building bulk is governed by a maximum street wall height and setback distance and sky exposure plane. The area is very well-served by transit. Subway lines include NQRW, 456, JZ, and ACE trains. As previously mentioned, the project site is in a regular corner lot located on the northwest corner of Broadway and Canal Street, both wide streets. It has approximately 77 feet of frontage on Canal and 79 feet of frontage on Broadway, with a total lot area of about 6,000 square feet. As proposed, the project site would contain a total of about 30,000 square feet of commercial floor area, which is 5FAR. The historic row house to remain was constructed in 1823 and is three stories in height and contains approximately 4,700 square feet of floor area. According to the applicant, historically, the building has housed ground-floor retail and office above. There's no certificate of occupancy for this building. Pursuant to LPC approval, the applicant would undertake masonry repair and cleaning, metal cornice repair and painting, replacement of wood windows at the primary and rear facades, the installation of new metal roofing and slate roofing at the rear, and the installation of a new wood storefront and entry door featuring a cast iron cornice and piers. As required by the special permit, the applicant would additionally implement a cyclical maintenance plan to ensure the continued maintenance of the building in perpetuity. As shown on the elevations of the proposed building, contrary to the M15B bulk regulations, the proposed new commercial building would rise without setback above the maximum allowable base height of 85 feet to a height of 115 feet along both the Broadway and Canal Street frontages. The neighborhood character diagrams of both sides of Broadway and Canal show that the proposed building, as approved by LPC, is in keeping with the surrounding context. This is along Broadway, and this is along Canal. To facilitate the proposed project, the applicant seeks bulk waivers above the maximum base height and within the initial 15-foot setback area from Broadway and Canal Street, which is highlighted in yellow. The proposed waivers would allow the building to take a form more consistent with the loft-style buildings in the historic district. The applicant also seeks a use waiver to allow Use Group 6 retail and office uses below the level of the second story of both buildings, which is highlighted in blue. Specifically, the ground floors of the historic building and new building would be connected and primarily occupied by retail uses. A small office entrance and access area is located along Canal Street at the western portion of the site. The cellar would be shared between Use Group 6 office, retail, and accessory uses. And the applicant has obtained all necessary LPC approvals for the conditions of a continued maintenance program and a certificate of appropriateness for the bulk modifications. The applicant seeks a 74-711 special permit to facilitate the construction of a new eight-story commercial building and the restoration of a three-story federal row house, and seeks the special permit to allow retail use below the level of the second story in both buildings. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Deloos?
Can you go to the floor planning? I mean, I'm trying to see what's, so the subway entrance that's there now will remain?
Correct.
And so how will it be impacted, if at all?
I don't think there will be an impact to it. During construction, the existing structures will be demolished, and then, after that, the subway entrances will remain as they are.
Okay. Just seems like an opportunity missed.
Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, well, that was actually the gist of my question here, about whether there was any thought of pulling those stairs into the new building. I recognize this is a small site, and it's not in any of the sort of areas where we can compel that to happen. But I noticed that on the, straight across Broadway, there is a relatively new three-story building that does have the subway entrance inside the building. So I kind of wondered, how did that happen, and does the same process potentially apply here?
We can certainly look into that and talk to the applicant about it.
Okay. Commissioner Ramperchad?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. There's only one means of egress out from the cellar? Can you just have the applicant, I guess, confirm that's all you need?
Sure. I can double-check that.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, then, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Item 3 on the agenda, page 43, is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn, Community District 2. Our presenter is Anthony Grande.
Good afternoon. This is a private application by Fleet Center, Inc. for zoning map and text amendments to facilitate the development of a new 14-story, approximately 205,000-square-foot commercial office building at 101 Fleet Place in downtown Brooklyn. So the project area location is in the downtown Brooklyn area of Brooklyn, Community District 2. The proposed project area is a rectangular area, fronting on the mid-block portion of the east side of Fleet Place, a narrow street with widths between 50 and 60 feet, between Willoughby Street to the south and Myrtle Avenue to the north. The area has a depth of 200 feet and a width of 164 feet along the Fleet Place frontage. The project area contains the proposed development site, which is an approximately 20,000-square-foot, irregularly shaped interior lot with a single frontage on Fleet Place. The development site is currently improved with a one-story brick building with an early childhood education facility, which provides pre-K and daycare services. The project area is within an existing R6 district, which covers the majority of the block, and extends to the east to cover the majority of the area east of the project site. R6 districts are medium-density districts that allow residential and community facility uses. Under the height factor option, residential development has a maximum FAR of 2.43 with no fixed height limit. Under the quality housing option, residential development on a narrow street would have a maximum FAR of 2.2 with a contextual envelope limiting base height to four stories and total building height to five stories. Community facility uses are allowed to a maximum FAR of 4.8. The other zoning districts on the block include the R71 district, which is just to the north, running along Myrtle Avenue. And to the west, across Fleet Place, is AC64 district, which is a high-density commercial and mixed-use district generally found in central business districts. The surrounding area has a mixed character. Generally, to the west is a high-density commercial and mixed-use area of downtown Brooklyn, the city's third-largest central business district. This area generally contains high-rise commercial office buildings and mixed-use buildings with residential development. To the north and west of the project area, there are several recently constructed residential high-rise buildings with ground-floor retail. These buildings range from 32 to 42 stories. To the west, across Flatbush Avenue Extension, is the MetroTech campus, which is a major commercial employment hub. And just south along Flatbush Avenue is the 1.6 million-square-foot City Point Development, with over 600,000 square feet of retail space in a multi-story podium. To the south of the project area, across Willoughby Street, is the Brooklyn campus of Long Island University. And to the east of the project area is a medium-density, primarily residential area. This area is well-served by transit. Three subway stations are located within a 10-minute walk from the project area, the Decalb Avenue BQR station, and the J Street MetroTech ACFR station, and the Nevin Street 2345. The block containing the development site is primarily residential. Directly to the east and the south are the University Towers, which is a 550-unit apartment complex of three 15-story towers, surrounded primarily by parking lots. These buildings were developed in 1958 and approximately comply with the existing R6 zoning with no commercial components. To the north, along Myrtle Avenue, there are three recently constructed mixed-use buildings ranging from nine to 15 stories, and these were built pursuant to the R71 zoning. Directly across Fleet Place from the project area is a four-story commercial office building that the building predates existing zoning. So this is a view from Fleet Place of the project area from the street level. We can see the development sites with the one-story brick building in the center, and the adjacent 15-story building to the north, and just to the left of the photo, we can see the 32-story building just across Fleet Place. And in this view, facing south, we see the project area, as well as the nearest of the University Towers, just south of the development site. Note that the street widens here, which is sort of visible on the right-hand side of the photo. The street widens from 50 feet to 60 feet near the northern edge of the project area. The proposed development would be a new 14-story, approximately 205,000-square-foot commercial office building, for a total FAR of 10. While the building is designed as an office building, there would be ground-floor space that the applicant has described could be used for retail as well. The first two floors of the proposed building would be recessed at the street level to provide additional space in front of the building's entryway. The street wall on floors 3 through 6 would abut the street line, and then above the sixth floor, there would be a 20-foot setback, after which the building would rise to 14 stories and a total height of 196 feet. One loading berth would be required by the C64 district commercial regulations. This is shown in the northern edge of the proposed development illustrative plan. In order to facilitate the proposed developments, the applicant requests two actions. First would be a zoning map amendment. The project area is proposed to be changed from an R6 district to a C64 district, effectively extending the district from across the street to cover the project area. The proposed zoning map would also reflect the expansion of the special downtown Brooklyn district, denoted by the area shaded in gray on the zoning map. C64 districts are high-density commercial districts that allow commercial and community facility uses to a maximum FAR of 10.0, and residential uses with MIH to a maximum FAR of 12.0. Within the special downtown Brooklyn district, C64 districts have two options for height and setback regulations. One option is to comply with the contextual zoning envelope for R10 districts, which for narrow streets allows a maximum base height of 125 feet and a maximum height of 185 feet. Alternatively, buildings may use the tower regulations defined in the special district text, which require setbacks for portions of buildings above 85 feet and has lot coverage limits for towers above certain heights. Generally, no height limit applies to C64 districts. Second, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment for two separate sections of the zoning resolution. One amendment would affect Article 10, Chapter 1, which has a series of seven maps that define the boundary of the special downtown Brooklyn district. And the proposed amendment would change the boundary to include the project area on all seven maps. And on Map 6, as shown on the left side of the screen, the map would expand the height limitation area to include the project area, so this would limit height within the project area to 400 feet. The other text amendment would change Appendix F of the zoning resolution to add the project area as a new MIH area, mapping options 1 and 2. Although the proposed project would be all commercial and not subject to MIH, the proposed rezoning allows an increase in residential floor area. Therefore, an MIH area would be mapped here, and if a project were to include a residential component, it would be subject to MIH. Thank you.
Before opening it up to the Commission, I do want to note that the Department is pleased to see a proposal for a 100% office building in downtown Brooklyn, but we have expressed to the applicant our concerns about the density that is being proposed. And with that, I'll toss it open. Commissioner Levin?
Well, I guess that partially addresses the question I was going to raise. I mean, by one argument, by the applicant's argument, this is, in fact, I think the EAS even claims that this site is in the heart of the downtown Brooklyn Commercial District, but actually, not quite. It's, it would be a fairly notable incursion of a commercial zoning designation into a residential area. And I'd be interested to see what response we get from public review about that land use change. I also note that with the zoning that they're requesting, we should also be sure we understand what might happen with the zoning, independent of this building. Sites change hands, and the EIAS studies as an alternative a 34-story residential building, which I can imagine poses some questions. But we need to, I think, as we consider this, we need to think about what kind of residential development might happen should this project, should the area get rezoned in this project, change. So I just put those out there as things to think about when they come back to us. Two sort of nuts and bolts questions. What's happening to the daycare center? Have, are they on board with this project? Do we know where they're going to go, or maybe they're going away? And does the building... And does the building at the corner of Myrtle Avenue have lotline windows that will be blocked?
So to the first question, the applicant has explained that the daycare center, they're on a year-to-year lease, and it's been that way for a few years. So, you know, their understanding is if this goes through, then, you know, the lease would expire, and the daycare center would have to relocate. As far as the lotline windows, I think, based on what I've seen, that there are windows after sort of the setback from the side, which is sort of visible here in the rendering. But I don't believe that there aren't legal windows facing the lotline, but I think there are some sort of smaller windows that...
Windows that may not be legally required?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, and then back to the daycare center. Yes, of course, legally, maybe it's just a year-to-year lease, but I think we need to understand the importance of that service in that community, what the state of their contracts are for continuing to provide the service. Is it needed? What alternative locations might there be? You know, this goes beyond a zoning question, but into a public impact question.
And I think we can try to provide some more information at the next hearing as well, and continue to raise this with the applicant.
Okay. Well, Brooklyn Community Services is operating it, so they presumably know what they're doing and be able to speak for themselves. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
So am I right in thinking, then, that this is not necessarily what would be built? It could be flipped to another building? What we're really talking about here is not approving a building, but approving a text amendment to the zoning. So it would have been helpful if city planning had provided alternative massings to show what could happen here, because this little misleading, you see this rendering, and you think, well, that's what you're approving, but really, we're not.
And certainly, that is, we will do that during the review period and also in hearing what concerns come from the community. And again, we have already expressed to the applicant our concerns about the district that they selected and our sense that... Can you go back to the first project area that shows MetroTech?
Yeah.
The fact that we have been comfortable with a lot of density along Flatbush Avenue Extension, which is quite wide and stands in market contrast to Fleet Place, which is almost difficult to see.
Is this the project where BCS are working with a developer? Are they part of that deal? Is that what I heard?
It's not my understanding that they're working on this.
No, no.
Commissioner Deloos.
I'm just wondering if we're aware of any information, conversations that the developers had with the community board thus far in terms of getting input? And, I mean, or is this really, I mean, I know it's the first formal time that the community board's going to be given a chance, but I'm just wondering if there have been conversations that led up to this.
I think there have been conversations. I am not really familiar with, you know, what the outcome of the conversations have been, but...
Okay, thanks.
Other comments? Okay, then the application is certified.
Item four on the agenda, page 78, is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 5. Our presenter is Lilia Carrier.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a pre-hearing application for proposed action by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services for a site selection and acquisition of property by the City of New York for assignment to parks. Spring Creek Park is located in East New York of Brooklyn Community District 5. Spring Creek is 105 acres of undeveloped salt marsh in the North Jamaica Bay. Upon acquisition of the proposed sites, parks will move forward with a plan to improve and restore ecosystem function of Spring Creek. The project is part of a larger preservation of open space led by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So the, it's right up here, that's the actual, the sites. Okay, so south of the shore parkway at the mouth of Spring Creek, other parkland is managed by the U.S. National Service as Gateway National Recreation Area and managed by New York State as the Shirley Chisholm State Park. To the west of the project area is Gateway Center, a major commercial hub in the area, as well as Brooklyn Development Center, which is currently being redeveloped into mixed use and commercial by the New York State Urban Development Corporation. The immediate surrounding area is marshland and open space, as well as multifamily residences zoned R4 east of the project site in Lindenwood. The project area is located on one tax block, four lots, and a portion of Drew Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood of East New York. The proposed project area consists of four privately-owned lots and a portion of Drew Street, a mapped but unbuilt street between the three lots. Here we have photos of the subject properties, which are dominated by urban fill and invasive Community Board 5 held a public hearing on this item on April 18th and recommended approving the application with 29 in favor, zero opposing, and zero abstaining. On May 24th, the borough president held a public hearing on the item. There were no speakers, and the borough president recommended approving with no modifications or conditions. The borough president recommended parks advise the city council on the following: coordinate with DEP and DOT regarding the installation of rain gardens, and engage with DOT to consider utilizing city bench and city street programs along the 75th Street perimeter, and installing lights, sidewalks, or guardrails along the undeveloped western edge of 75th Street. The public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, June 9th. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from the commission? Okay, this is ready for public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item five, page 93, is a pre-hearing review of a UDAP designation and disposition in Brooklyn Community District 5. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development proposes an urban development action area designation and urban development action area project approval for three vacant city-owned properties to facilitate the construction of three new buildings with approximately 41 affordable units in Brooklyn. Two project areas are located within the East New York rezoning area approved by the City Planning Commission 2016. The cluster is in the north-central area of East New York, neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 5. Project Area 1 is located at 190 Essex Street. Project Area 2 is located at 223-227 Vermont Street. And Project Area 3 is located at 581 and 583 Belmont Avenue. I will walk you through each of the project areas. Project Area 1 is located at 190 Essex Street, which is on the west side of Essex Street within an R5B zoning district. Project Area is served by numerous public facilities and institutions and is accessible through public transit. Development Site 1 is a vacant lot of approximately 9,800 square feet, and the building will be a three-story walk-up with approximately 15 units in a total height of 30 feet. The building will have a total floor area of approximately 13,000 square feet and an outdoor recreational open space in the rear yard of approximately 5,200 square feet. Amenities in the building are provided, and the unit breakdown will be one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Project Area 2 is located at 223-227 Vermont Street, which is on the east side of Vermont Street, within an M14 R6A within the Special Mixed Use District 16, an R5B zoning district. The area is well-served by public facilities and accessible through public transportation. Development Site 2 is a vacant city-owned lot of approximately 7,900 square feet. Subsequent to review session, HPD amended the application to adjust the proposed building to comply with zoning. New building is as follows. It will be a three-story walk-up building with approximately 11 units, reaching a total height of approximately 33 feet. It will have a total floor area of approximately 10,000 square feet and an outdoor open space in the rear yard of approximately 4,400 square feet. Amenities are provided within the building, and it will include one bathroom and two bathroom units. Project Area 3 is located at 581 and 583 Belmont Avenue, which is on the northern side of Belmont Avenue, within an R5 zoning district. The Project Area 3 is served by numerous educational facilities and is accessible through public transit. Development Site 3 has a lot area of approximately 10,000 square feet. Certified Lot 32 was excluded from the disposition request since the tax lot has a prior boards of estimates approval for the disposition. Subsequent to review session, HPD amended the application to include Lot 32 within the disposition request, so the whole project has the same approvals. Belmont Avenue Building will be a three-story walk-up building with approximately 15 affordable units and a total height of 30 feet. The proposed building will have a total floor area of approximately 12,500 square feet, and the entrance will be through Belmont Avenue. The outdoor space will be of approximately 5,600 square feet. Amenities are included within the building that will also have one bathroom and two bathroom units. HPD is requesting a designation of urban development action area approval and an urban development action area project and disposition of all city-owned properties. The development site will be conveyed to a developer selected by HPD. CB5 did not hold a meeting for the project. Brooklyn Borough President held a meeting, a hearing on May 1st, and approved with no modifications. Further recommendations include to prioritize outreach to include senior households and formerly homeless families, to incorporate resiliency and sustainability, energy, and stormwater practices within the project site, to advance vision-zero policies that improve pedestrian safety, and advance environmental-sensitive street disposals. CPC public hearing is scheduled next Wednesday, June 19th.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie.
So again, these renderings that we see, are these actual designs that will be built? Are they already assigned to a developer, or are we just looking at a UDAP text?
To my understanding, these are the designs, and the developer is already selected. It's a joint venture between East Brooklyn Congregations, Lapping, and the Markle Group.
Okay. And to what extent is HPD conducting design reviews of the developer's work? And the reason I say that is, you know, I think there's a place for innovative and experimental architecture, and there's also a place for calm, quiet, contextual architecture. And one wonders why, if you look, well, for example, go to slide eight.
Yes. Sorry for the speed.
No worries. So there's a very consistent facade of particular style, right? And you're inserting an addition in there, which looks nothing like, in terms of massing and scale, what the others look like, right? And if you go on, go back to your rendering of the three altogether.
The...
Yeah, the first slide, your first slide. I would have thought that what HPD would be looking for here would be to look around at the sort of context, the type of materials that are used, and have buildings that are complementary to that context. So my question is, to what extent is HPD pursuing that policy?
We can certainly ask HPD to testify to that on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
And we should also note that we work closely with HPD, and we encourage them to think creatively about the context and how to design their buildings, particularly Alexandra is understating her role in this and pushing HPD to be the best design possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
I mean, I would just say, as, you know, as someone whose organization has quite a bit of experience with HPD builds, I appreciate what you're saying, and I think it often, because some of that is the aesthetic and the eye-of-the-beholder kind of a thing, HPD, if it's not within the specific design guidelines, I think they generally allow some flexibility on that, where they don't necessarily allow as much flexibility these days, has to do with the size of units and things like that, and, you know, certain building systems and ensuring that the developers are abiding by enterprise green community standards as a minimum.
I understand that. No, I look at these images, and I was, when I look at these things, I'm always thinking, what's it going to be like in 10 years, 15 years, 25 years? And this sort of Legoland stuff, it ages pretty quickly, you know? And there are other tried-and-true methods of doing this kind of contextual housing. I mean, you know, obviously, there are cases where you want avant-garde and innovation, but I don't know if this is quite the place for that.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
Again, I hear you. You know, the one thing I would say, and this, I think it is an important point for HPD as well, especially when we're talking about infill development of this size, the cost per square foot or cost per dwelling unit may be a consideration. And, you know, the extent of flexibility to try to achieve facades that are age, that would age better under HPD term sheets, I think, is something to be discussed for infill projects.
I think you're right, Commissioner, that we are seeing this progression of, or succession of HPD projects on smaller lots, whereas before, there had been a larger cutoff. And the benefits, obviously, are that in addition to providing housing on lots that have been ice-works in the neighborhood, some of them also provide opportunities for homeownership, which is yet another positive. The flip side is that I would imagine the financing is all the harder.
Yeah. No, it's really good that they're doing this. I mean, I think it's the way to fill in some of those underutilized... There was a competition recently organized with HPD on how to design for these narrow lots, and that might be, I mean, we would like to see the result of that translate into this process.
We can ask HPD to give us an update on where they are on their small lots design competition. Yes, Commissioner Rampershad.
Just looking at the three renderings, I'm just curious, the building in the middle, which I believe is Vermont, there's no roof access, or can you find out?
To my understanding, none of the roofs are going to be accessible for the project.
So those are not stair bulkheads on the other two? I mean, in other words, is the stair going to go to the roof for the building in the middle?
Right, I think it's just for maintenance, but I can ask HPD to clarify that on Wednesday. What is the program for the roof?
Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll hear this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
All right. Item six, page 135, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 8. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The applicant, Queens Community Board 8, proposes a zoning map amendment from R2 to R2X for two non-contiguous areas in the Kew Gardens Hills neighborhood in CD8. The project area, consisting of 378 tax lots across 16 blocks, is located northeast of the Kew Gardens interchange, to the east of the Flushing Meadows Corona Park. This proposal is primarily intended to permit horizontal enlargements into the rear yard of existing homes while maintaining the low-density, single-family character of the neighborhood. The proposed R2X district was established in 1989 by the Lower Density Contextual Zoning Text Amendment, and includes a set of zoning regulations that typically produce homes with a larger footprint and higher floor area ratio. A zoning text amendment is also required to enable this rezoning. Zooming in, the surrounding area is predominantly developed with one-family residences and some multifamily buildings. The project area, Zone R2, is surrounded... The project area, Zone R2, is surrounded by several low-density zoning districts, including R32, R4, R401, and R4B. The project area, made of two sub-areas, Project Area A to the north, B to the south, is generally bounded by 72nd Avenue to the north, Union Turnpike to the south, Park Drive East to the west, and Main Street and Village Place to the east. Project area contains three public parks and is well-served by public transit. New York City Transit operates several local express and select bus service routes along Main Street and Union Turnpike. Access to the ENF subway lines are available to the southwest. The Kew Gardens interchange is beyond the boundaries of this map above. Just note, the aerial aboves rotate 90 degrees with Flushing Meadows Park to the west in the background. The project area has been Zoned R2 since 1961. It was mapped so to reflect the existing built environment at the time. R2 districts are limited to single-family detached homes with an FAR of .5, and required to have 30-foot rear yards, 15-foot front yards. Although R2 districts provide some flexibility in building large homes, current residents view it as too constrictive for their larger families. Above are two photos of, from homes in Project Area A. Both, both, one on the left, excuse me, was built prior to 1961, the one to the right was a more recent building. Both comply with the existing R2 district regulations. Same pattern above, from Project Area B to the south, the home on the left, pre-61, one to the right, post-61. Above is the proposed zoning change map. The dotted black lines in the right show that, show the proposed R2X district boundaries unchanged from the existing R2 district boundaries. There's no specific project to be facilitated by this, by these actions. The rezoning is intended to provide additional flexibility, additional floor area for existing homes, flexibility in the bulk regulations for future new construction, while also maintaining the character of the neighborhood. The community has proposed this rezoning, again, to provide flexibility for the larger families. Above is a comparison chart of the R2 and R2X districts. Most prominent changes is the increase of FAR to 1.02 with attic allowance and the minimum rear yard now at 20 feet. After certification on April 22nd, Community Board quickly recommended approval on May 8th with a vote of 38 in favor to oppose, followed by nearly quick turnaround by the Borough President on May 28th recommending approval. In conclusion, again, this is a single-family, single-family rezoning, consistent with the 89 text amendment, to allow in R2 districts large, single-family detached dwellings with a high lot coverage. Several homes in this area had extensions built prior to 61, resulting in FAR non-compliance. This, we're bringing, this, these properties 100% into compliance, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission? Okay, then we will hear this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 7 on the agenda is a city council modification scope determination to strike MIH Option 2 and add deep affordability to the two Howard rezoning, which the city council believes apparently is not Howard enough. Staff believes that these changes are in scope.
And so I would ask for an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the city council telling them that it's within scope. Okay, done.
Madam Chair, I'm just recusing from that.
Yes.
Just for the record. All right. Item 8, a city council modification scope determination to strike Option, MIH Option 2 for the Brook 156 project. Staff believes that this also, these changes are also in scope.
And once again, a sent by show of hands to send the letter. Done.
Item 9, a city council modification scope determination for Haven Green. Annie White will discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Sylvia Lee, who was the project manager for this. But as you may recall, the application by the Department of Housing Preservation Development for disposition of city-owned property was approved by the City Planning Commission on April 10th of 2019. On June 11th, the city council voted on the application and has proposed draft modifications. The modification would restrict the disposition to require the provision of approximately 8,400 square feet of open space to be permanently accessible to the public. Of that 8,400, approximately 6,700 square feet would be open to the sky, shown in that rendering on the right, and 1,700 square feet would be a covered pedestrian passageway on, onto Elizabeth Street. The amount and configuration of this open space required by the proposed city council modification is the same as was proposed by the applicant and what was considered by the commission. The department has reviewed the proposed changes and determined that these proposed modifications raise no land use or environmental issues requiring further review.
Any questions from the Commission? Okay, then, once again, a sent by show of hands to send the letter. Thank you.
Item 10, a city council modification scope determination for the Bay Street Corridor Plan. Joe Helferdy is here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Here to discuss the city council modifications to the land use actions intended to facilitate the Bay Street Corridor neighborhood plan, specifically the text amendment. The commission voted to approve this application on April 22nd, and on June 11th, the city council has proposed the following modifications. First, with regard to the FAR exemption for school uses at the special Stapleton Waterfront District, city council has modified to state that such school must be public and operated by the Department of Education. Regarding the use and applicability regulations of the special Bay Street Corridor District for certain uses in Sub Area D, the city council has clarified to state that such use must be for a public service or public transportation use. Regarding mandatory inclusionary housing, city council has proposed that Options 1 and 3 be applicable to the Bay Street Corridor and Canal Street rezoning areas. And additionally, minor modifications were made to the special Bay Street Corridors, Sub Districts A and D, to modify bulk and density regulations. So in Sub District A, which again is the northernmost parcel in the rezoning area, city council has proposed to lower the floor area ratio for MIH sites from 4.6 to 4.0, as well as reduce the maximum building height from 145 feet to 125 feet. Additional modifications were made to street wall requirements for portions of the building taller than the base height. And in Sub District D, city council has proposed to establish two sub-areas, D1 and D2. Sub Area D1 would remain unchanged from what the commission had approved. Sub Area D2, which is primarily comprised of lots that are sharing an adjacent district boundary with the R3X district, to have a reduced height in FAR. So this would be, Sub District 2 would have a 2.75 FAR for MIH sites, as well as a 65-foot maximum base height. So upon review, the department believes that these modifications are within scope and present no further issues.
Any questions? Commissioner Delaues.
Is this the first time that there's a proposed modification to FAR and base height within MIH as part of a neighborhood rezoning?
We can check. I believe East Harlem had modifications to FAR and base height.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Cirilla.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's, and I realize what is before us today, but I think it needs to be said, and Joe, thank you so much for the, sort of, the wrap-up here, that there is a, I think what's happened here today, I think, requires us at some point to think about the role that we play in the identification and review of the affordability options. And what I mean by that is that all, all the options are available in the text. So there's, there's never a point as to whether or not they're actually not in scope when they come back to us. But when you think about the development of MIH and the options that were discussed and identified with particular attention in this, what I'm saying now about the workforce option, it was developed specifically for this community's opportunities. And so the idea that it's not, and I respect the council's authority in modifying the application, so that's not the issue at all, but it does raise the question as to the role we play in the review and analysis of any option in any neighborhood. Because applicants are selecting an option, multiple options, that they believe is appropriate, variety appropriate for the community, appropriate for financing, whatever the reasons may be. And then we review those in our process, the public comments on them. Very often, we're only really focused on the ones that are there, and we're trying to learn about the ones that are not. And then at the end of that process, regardless of what we've done, they go to the council, and the council makes their legally optional decision about how this part of the process proceeds. And maybe it's clearer to me because it's here where I've seen this, I knew how we developed workforce, I know why it existed, but I just wonder whether or not we should be thinking about how this works through our portion of the public review process, and whether or not, since all of these options are always in scope, that we aren't analyzing all of these options and the appropriateness for a community, so that at least in the public review process, we're providing information for the next phase of the land use review process, that we've gotten to discuss all of the options. I mean, we, we could actually go through a process where there's one option in an application, and when it comes back to us, it's an option we've never even discussed. And there seems to be something wrong with that, for, at least for me. And so maybe it's highlighted today, because of looking at how this has played out, but I just wanted to share that sort of thought about it, because so many pieces of the land use process, and we've seen this time and time again, are being decided, you know, after us, and again, it's all within what the charter had potentially envisioned. It's happening more often than not, and, and if it comes back to us and all we're doing is saying, yes, it's in scope, then perhaps we should be looking at all of these things with a different eye than we are at this point in time.
I would note, Commissioner, that I think there are many discussions that could be had about altermanic privilege, the tradition in the council.
Again, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out if it in better.
But I actually think that this is MIH working the way that it was intended, and I certainly would not suggest a reopening of MIH. It is relatively recent, and I don't see that the structure of it, providing the four options, is flawed, even if you might disagree with what the council, at least the Council Land Use Committee voted on unanimously for the options here.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm not challenging what the council has done. I'm trying to figure out, and I'm not suggesting reopening MIH, I, I, although I don't know where we will ever use workforce again, if it's not here, but maybe another point in time it becomes relevant in, in communities, but if it's not relevant in a neighborhood that was looking to address the needs of the neighborhood it was adjacent to, and an entire borough that had other options with, then it's hard to imagine where it may exist elsewhere. However, I can't see into the future. I can only deal with the present, and I feel like because of the way it works, we should then be looking at the implications of all of the options in our review, knowing that it's possible that the council will determine in their right that one of the options we haven't even focused on is the right one. And then we're, and then all we're doing at the end, after we've spent a lot of time, resources, staff time, our own homework, and review, and of course, in some cases, this is a city application, it could be a private application, where we've asked applicants to come back with additional information, and at the end of the process, it isn't even what we had been focused on. So I just wonder if, under the existing process, there's a way to get more information about all the different options, so we have something that we're working with better than and more reliably than we are today.
I would, I would note, Commissioner, that that is what was done at the time of the adoption of MIH and the determination of including the options. It's not a land use determination on a case-by-case basis. And again, the question before us is the scope of...
Understood, and I began by saying I understand what the, what we're being asked to do today, but the reflection that I'm sharing is just based upon the practice that seems to be occurring, and I just wondered if there was a way this, we could play a better role than in educating during the, and learning even for ourselves what all of the potential options could be in a community, as opposed to focus only on the ones that the applicant has given us, and then it turns out that it isn't even any of the things that we've spent time discussing and working on. I mean, I know, again, it's not being able to look into the future, but I just thought I would share that point of view.
Commissioner Delaues.
I wasn't here on the day that this was voted on, so I didn't, I didn't get a chance to comment on this, but, and I think it's perhaps a friendly suggestion in relation to my colleague's points. I mean, you know, MIH is about, the reason why we put it in place was to promote and preserve affordable housing within New York City writ large, and then within specific communities. And I think one of the practices that we've begun to establish here when rezonings happen is staff presenting information about local AMI. And I think that's an important piece of information as part of thinking about what is appropriate to be mapped. I also believe honestly that understanding what is market currently at the local level is another important piece of information, because 130% of AMI, or the workforce option, is market rate, or even perhaps above market rate in certain communities. And so I think all of that information is helpful, along with where are the greatest gaps in AMI at the local level, and then citywide. Like, if we have, I think, those four pieces of information, as we talk about this, then I think, you know, to Commissioner Cirilla's point, I think, I know that when I hear about these things, I'm calculating all that in my head and I'm writing all that down, that's when I'm thinking about what the greatest need is in that particular community. And I think people can disagree about certain things, but I think that would be a helpful exercise for everybody as part of a process, and perhaps making that more explicit would be helpful. I certainly am glad that this is the modification that is coming back, because 130% of AMI, even in Staten Island, is market rate or above market rate, and I'm not sure that, at least I don't believe the intention of MIH was to peg the AMI level to whatever market rate is at that local community. It's, I think it's about trying to bring in affordable units or preserve existing affordable units, so that might mean that that option is more appropriate for a neighborhood where AMI is even much higher than that, in my opinion. And I will just say, from a practical standpoint, of having to market 130% of AMI units in communities that, where 130% of AMI is at market or higher, they're actually very challenging to fill. And so, you know, I think it's something to take note of.
Thank you. Those were helpful suggestions, and I hope you've noticed that we have started, as a routine matter, including the AMI. Your suggestion about comparison to market, to the extent we can get that information, we'll try and include that as well. Okay, other comments? Okay, then I'll ask for an assent by show of hands to the narrow issue before us, which is that this is within scope. Thank you.
For the June 19th public meeting, staff have prepared reports for the 273 Avenue U rezoning. U rezoning. Also scheduled for a decision on June 19th are 428 Loretto Street, Stanley Avenue, and 68 Butterworth Avenue, all in Staten Island. For post-hearing follow-ups, 201, 207, 7th Avenue. Remaining questions on that? And then, One Penn Plaza. Other questions on that? Okay. I believe that that concludes the review session for the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, June 17th, 2019. The time is 12, or 2:12 PM.